I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for January 14th, 2020, which still sounds so incredibly weird. 6:30 PM. Hello, everybody, and happy ratification day.
Ooh.
For those history-minded folks, you probably know what that is, but I hate to admit that I had no clue. So, for those that struggled through history class like I did, it is the anniversary of the Congressional Proclamation of the Ratification of the Treaty of Paris, January 14th, 1784, officially ending the American Revolutionary War. So, that's a pretty big deal. So, our meeting. We're going to start with a presentation from Erica Underwood, the Government Affairs Person from PGE. So, is it Director or?
Local Government Affairs Manager.
Manager, there we go. Local Government Affairs Manager on the Electric Decarbonization Program. Our consent agenda includes approval of the December 10th, 2019, regular meeting minutes, approval of the November bank balances, budget report for period ending November 30th, 2019, approval of the November check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for December 2019, Resolution 1171, Designating On-Point Credit Union as a Designated Depository of the City and authorizing city officials to withdraw funds. Our regular meeting agenda includes Resolution 1172, adopting a revised master fee schedule, and repealing Resolution 1169, consider authorizing the Agreement for Housing Needs and Code Amendment Assistance via the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant, and City Council Liaison Appointments. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Here.
Counselor Neese? Counselor Tracy?
Here.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stumpel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you go, can I ask for a point of correction?
Yeah, go for it.
So, I'm going to ask for a point of correction. The mayor read off the consent agenda. Resolution 1171 states Designating On-Point Credit Union as a Designated Depository of the City and authorizing certain city officials to withdraw funds.
Oh, I was just doing a recap. Yeah, okay. All right. So, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
No, ma'am.
You're going to get this. You got it. All right. First thing on our agenda is the presentation from PGE.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thanks for having us. We really appreciate it. We wanted to just come and give you an update on some of our focus area. Well, our focus area for the past two years, yeah, at least. You know, noticing the impacts of climate change and global warming, we've really turned an eye. We're not your grandfather's utility anymore. We've really turned an eye toward looking to the future of the environment, looking to make a cleaner, greener future for the folks that live here.
Okay, hold on.
Yes.
Is the mic on? Can you all hear him in the back? I don't think that you can.
Pull it closer.
Okay.
We've been turning an eye toward the... Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Toward the future and working toward making a cleaner, greener future. And so, with that, we have goals of reducing our emissions over a period of time. And so, I have my colleague here, Alicia Trainer, who's the Environmental Policy Manager for PGE. She will be giving you a presentation, an update on our strategy, on how we're going to reach those goals, why we have that strategy, and be able to answer any questions at the end, if you have any. So, I'll turn it over to Alicia.
Hi there. Thank you, Eric. Again, Alicia Trainer, Environmental Policy Manager. Please ask me any questions along in this presentation. It does kind of get a little wonky. So, first, I'm going to start off with a few key definitions just to kind of set the playing field of what we're discussing here. So, the first definition is what is deep decarbonization? That is the transformation of the energy economy. I'll get to the definition of what energy economy is. To transform and reduce greenhouse gas emissions consistent with the current scientific consensus of what we should reduce to. We commissioned this study, surprisingly, two and a half years ago. And at that time, the IPCC, kind of the International Governmental Panel on Climate Change, said that should be consistent with a 2-degree C scenario. That science has since changed, but I always like to set that tone because I do get questioned on that a lot of times. So, how do you transform the energy economy to meet these scientific goals? When you use the term "energy economy" or "energy system", those terms are kind of used interchangeably. And what that means is the entire network of energy-producing, transporting, and using of energy in our economy. And this primarily focuses around fossil fuels in our economy through transportation, through buildings, through electricity generation, through industrial. So, how do you transform... When you're talking about the energy economy, how do you transform all those systems together? And then, what is a pathway? The pathway is a result of a deep decarbonization study, and that's what PGE did. And I'll get into a little bit of specifics about our study. But a pathway is the result of that. It's that blueprint, that plan of how you reach those endpoints consistent with scientific goals. So, why did PGE do a deep decarbonization? We hired this out to a third-party consultant, a very reputable consultant in this area. We did it to inform our Integrated Resource Planning Process. That's our long-term planning process. That's when we look out 20, 30 years and determine what load growth is in our area and what resources are we going to procure or build to meet that load growth out in that area. So, we wanted to know if we have policy in this state that is consistent with reaching these goals, what is that going to look for in energy system? So, we wanted to hire a consultant to do that study to help us with that long-term resource planning process. And then, also, there's, as you guys probably are very well aware, there is many conversations going on in the state of Oregon right now regarding carbon regulation. And so, we wanted to be informed going into those conversations about what is best for our customers and the electricity system as a whole. So, a few details about our study. It's an economy-wide look. So, it looks at all sources of CO2 emissions in our service area. And it's consistent with reaching an 80% reduction in CO2 emissions by 2050. So, that economy-wide look of 80% reduction by 2050. And again, we commissioned this study to answer a few key questions. What would energy, electricity service look like in this deep decarbonized future? If everybody's driving around in an electric vehicle or heating their homes with electricity instead of maybe natural gas today or gasoline today, that puts... The electricity system needs to be operated in significantly different ways than it is today. And our peaks will be different. When our highest load will be different. What type of resources are we going to need to procure or build to meet that increasing load? And then, what is that cost going to be to our customers? Not necessarily their electricity cost, but their overall, what we call their energy wallet, what they spend on energy in a month. So, we'll get to kind of all of those topics or all those questions in this presentation. A little bit more. Again, on the scope of our study, again, we're looking at CO2 emissions only. This is not taken into account. When you're talking about greenhouse gas emission reductions, there's a whole suite of greenhouse gases. CO2 is the bulk of that. And this study only looks at CO2 emissions. Doesn't take into account, say, methane from leakage from the natural gas system or methane from landfills. That stuff is just really, really hard to model. And if there are policies addressing CO2 emissions from kind of fossil fuels in our economy, there really needs to be policies addressing those other sources of emissions. And again, since PGE only serves about half of the state's economy, we took about half of that end goal for the state. All greenhouse gas accounting in our state is done on a statewide basis. There's nothing specific to PGE service territory. So, we needed to take that statewide goal, starting point and goal, and we needed to allocate that to our service territory. So, we took about 50% since we serve about 50% of the state's population. A couple of key study principles before we get into the details of this study. This study assumes no early replacement of technology. If you're driving... We didn't want to... Sorry, let me start over. Something called natural stock rollover. So, what we did when we commissioned this study and hired the consultant, we didn't want to assume that people had to retire their equipment. And when we use the term "equipment", that could mean your car. That could mean your furnace. That could mean an industrial operation that uses, say, onsite natural gas. We didn't want to assume early retirement of that. So, we assume that when the end of the life of that equipment comes, that's when you replace it with that lower-emitting, newer technology. We also assume no technological breakthroughs. This study assumes technologies that are near to us and in the larger economy or close to being near. And where we push that envelope a little bit is on energy storage, particularly lithium-ion battery storage, where right now, cost-effective batteries is only in like the four-hour storage. We pushed that to six to eight hours because we really hope that is here in the very near future because that will help the transition. And we also assume that the customers in our service territory didn't need to change their behavior to meet these goals. If you drive your car to work today, you're going to drive your car to work in 2050. You're just going to use probably an electric vehicle than an internal combustion engine in this study. So, we scoped out three different pathways. Remember, those are those plans or blueprints in addition to a reference case. You always have to, in these type of studies, you always have to compare to a reference case, kind of a business-as-usual case. So, we included a high electrification, a low electrification, and a high DER pathway. I'm going to go through these in a little bit of detail, but I want to go through the high electrification and the high DER pathways first. Those pathways are very similar except for one key area, and I will get to that one key area in a second. So, what this assumes is that greenhouse gas emissions are driven out of the electricity system. That's our job. That's consistent with the goal that Eric already referenced. We have a goal, an internal goal, to reduce our emissions by more than 80%. So, we need to continue upon that goal and drive greenhouse gas emissions out of our electricity system. And then, with that, we need to push other sectors of the economy, particularly the building and transportation sector, onto the electricity system through beneficial electrification. So, those two pathways are very similar. The main difference there is in the high DER. DER stands for Distributed Energy Resources. Here, that means rooftop solar. We kind of, in the model, we built out the technical potential of rooftop solar in our service territory. We wanted to kind of test that theory that could you solve kind of quote-unquote "the climate crisis" in our area by building out rooftop solar and battery storage on the residential and commercial side and helping meet that goal? And we'll get to a slide where it shows you can't really do that. And that's particularly because we live in the Pacific Northwest. We have a lot of clouds. It rains a lot, and we have a lot of trees. So, it's just not technically feasible here. It helps if our customers want to put on rooftop solar, please do, but it can't completely solve the problem. And then, the low electrification case is you still have to drive greenhouse gas emissions out of the electricity system, but we also, you maintain the natural gas pipeline for heating and industrial uses. You just decarbonize the natural gas pipeline through things like power to gas and hydrogen. We'll get to a little bit of that. So, the main takeaway is you can do it. With today's technological output, depending on which pathway you take, you are going to meet that 80% reduction goal. But to meet those goals, we have to have success across three pillars. And those pillars are energy efficiency, electricity decarbonization, and electrification. And these are tied together, and we have to do all three of these. We have to do them, and we have to do them together. And they're linked. And what I mean by that... So, when you... I'm going to move to the next slide. Same information, but presented a different way. The reference case you'll see here includes all the energy sources in our economy right now. So, electricity, natural gas, CNG, LNG, compressed liquefied natural gas, gasoline, diesel, and other. Other means marine fuel or aviation fuel. As you'll see, in these cases, we drop... The whole energy economy uses about a quarter to a third less energy, not just electricity, but that overall energy. When you convert all of that gasoline and diesel to the same unit, that overall energy drops by a quarter to third. So, we just use significantly less energy in these futures, which is actually a very good thing. And that's through things typically like energy efficiency appliances, those typical things that we think about, changing out light bulbs. But where you get the biggest bang for the buck is through electrification. An electric car and primarily the transportation sector. The electric car just uses about three to four times less energy than an internal combustion engine when driving that mile. They're just inherently more efficient. So, by squeezing out, as you'll see, the light blue in the middle is gasoline. You're basically squeezing out gasoline out of the economy, and you're pushing that then over to the electricity system. And that's where actually you get the most energy efficiencies by converting current technologies to electric motors. Sorry. That was a tough one to get up. But as you'll see, the green at the bottom is the electricity. As the overall energy pie gets smaller, electricity takes up a bigger portion of that pie, even in the low electrification case because we're driving basically the transportation sector onto the electricity system. So, what does that mean for a PGE, for the electricity provider in the region? What that means by 2050, most of the generation is going to come from carbon-free resources. It just has to to meet these goals. And because you remember, we were kind of bound in this study by what's technologically available to us today, that to meet that new load basically means a build-out of solar and wind to meet that new load. You can't... Nuclear is not an option in the state of Oregon. There's other technologies that could help meet, that produce carbon-free generation, but they're just not available to us in Oregon. So, that means a build-out of wind and solar. And you'll see that a lot of it ends up being Pacific Northwest... Or, sorry, Gorge, Pacific Northwest, wind, Eastern Oregon, solar, utility-scale solar. You'll see a tiny little sliver at the top of that graph, and that's rooftop solar. And again, rooftop solar is great. It just, due to where we live in the Pacific Northwest, it just doesn't produce. It has about a 12% capacity factor, which means about 12% of the time, rooftop solar in our service territory is generating electricity. And it's just due to the beautiful place that we live and the reasons why we live here. But by 2050, if we're meeting our load through variable resources like wind and solar, they're not always there when we need them. The challenge and the opportunity as an electricity provider, as a balancing authority in this area, is how to integrate all that new renewable resources. And so, we need our typical resources that we already have today, our existing hydro and our existing natural gas plants to help balance, to help keep the grid balanced and the lights on at all times. In addition to that, we also need energy storage, and we need something called flexible loads. So, this study, when I use the term "energy storage", this study tested out lithium-ion batteries, kind of what you think of. But energy storage could be anything. It could be pumped hydro. It could be a new technology that we just haven't even heard of yet. We just need energy storage on the grid that that charges when the sun is shining or when the wind is blowing, and then it discharges during those peak times. Say, at 5 o'clock when the sun isn't there anymore, we need it to discharge during those peak times. In addition to that, we need something called flexible loads. Flexible loads is managing the loads behind the meter at a house, at a commercial building, at an industrial facility. So, if everybody is driving in an electric vehicle and they come home and plug in that car at 5:00 PM, that's horrible for the grid because that's also when you're turning on your heat or your air conditioner to be on at the time of year when you're cooking dinner and all those things, all those loads. And everybody doing it at the same time drives up the peak. But if you can come home and plug in your car, but we know that you've plugged in your car and you don't need it till maybe 8 o'clock tomorrow morning, we can charge it overnight and help manage and integrate renewables. We can use the loads at the other end to help integrate renewables, and it keeps the cost of this future significantly lower. So, takeaways. We can do it. Even with today's technological outlook, we can meet greenhouse gas reduction goals consistent with today's science. It's going to require a transformation of the energy economy, and it's going to both require the consumer of the energy and the producer of that energy to be involved. And it's going to require timely coordination across policies, stakeholders. This is going to be kind of an all-hands-on-deck path forward to meet these goals. To meet these goals as an electricity provider, we need new sources of flexible load, that energy storage and... Sorry, we need new sources of flexibility, energy storage and flexible loads to help keep that grid balanced in addition to our existing resources, which are hydroelectric facilities and our natural gas plants. And we need to electrify the transportation sector if we want to meet these goals. We just, it's the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state, and we cannot meet these goals if we do not electrify, especially light-duty transportation. That's all I got. I ran through that really fast. So, if there are any questions, I am more than happy to answer them.
Counselor Reisner?
So, how much is this going to cost us? Me as an individual consumer and us as a city?
That is a great question. I realize this slide deck, actually, I took out a slide, and I apologize for that. And I can give it to Eric to share with you guys. What this study found is that actually by 2050, consumers will be saving money under these futures. And I wish I had not deleted out this slide, but again, I'll give it to Eric so he can pass it along to you guys. Is that you're going to be paying more in electricity, and you're going to be paying more in upfront costs on new technologies. But the amount of money that you will save by not paying for fuel, basically at the gas pump for your car and natural gas, it more than offsets the increase in those other prices. There's huge air bars in these estimates because it's based off gasoline estimates available today, natural gas prices. And you know, if this future materializes, which PGE hopes that it does, those estimates will need to be updated. But it actually shows that by 2050, consumers, when you look at the entire energy wallet, actually save money because you're not paying for gasoline and you're not paying for natural gas.
So, what you're advocating is everybody go to electric cars?
Well, PGE has a belief that climate change is real and that if we want to reduce emissions consistent with science, you have to tackle the transportation sector, which is 40% of the emissions in the state. It's the largest source, and you cannot meet these goals if you don't electrify transportation.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to clarify one thing. When I talk about that, I'm talking primarily about light-duty transportation, many of the cars that we drive around. There are different strategies to tackle medium and heavy duty. I'll be honest with you, the technology is just not there for medium, heavy duty. There's a lot of R&amp;D money being focused in on medium and heavy duty for electrification, but there are alternative fuels to help reduce emissions from those sectors of the economy.
So, how does meeting those goals help me meet my goal that I want to go to Grand Canyon again like I did this last spring break in electric car?
Lots of charging stations.
But I don't have three weeks to get there.
Fast charging.
Yeah, fast charging. I have an electric vehicle. And I will be honest with you, I would not take it past where I drive it today. I drove it here. It was totally fine. I also have an internal combustion car. I have a minivan because I have little kids, and we, same as you, we go on road trips. So, this is an evolving technology, but you are absolutely right, Mayor, that the charging infrastructure has to be there to support this future.
And there's a lot of investment going into it.
There's a lot of investment, a lot of research. PGE has been implementing public charging stations across our service territory. Eric would be happy to give you more information about that. But it's not something you can do tomorrow. It's something that you can hopefully do in 10 to 15 years.
So, what percentage is currently being provided by solar and wind through PGE?
Right now, we're about 40% carbon-free. And that's a mixture of wind and hydroelectric primarily.
Very cool.
40%.
So...
But that's not just wind and solar. That's hydroelectric, wind and solar.
Right. So, wind and solar, how much is being provided?
Our RPS, our Renewable Portfolio Standard right now is 15%.
Okay.
So, right now, 15%. But that's going to grow to, how about this? State mandated, it has to be 50% by 2050. If you look at our most recent Integrated Resource Plan, we go well above what the state mandate will be because it's more cost-effective. As load grows and if some of our older generations are rolling off, it is, our most recent IRP shows that actually a wind resource is our most cost-effective resource to meet our energy needs. There's a difference between energy and capacity, but I won't get to that. But our energy, kind of our day-to-day needs, is actually cheaper as a new resources to go after a wind resource than any other resource.
So, well, I better not say it that way. The... Well, I'm trying to think how to say this without it sounding negative. But my understanding that the electrical grid, PGE's and all, is fragile. What's PGE doing to improve it?
Well, I don't know what you mean by fragile. There is a whole, Eric can give you, we have a whole... How do I say this? A whole initiative internally to go about around resiliency and hardening of our grid, around additional backups. We can, I'm not the person to answer the question around grid reliability, but I know that we have internal initiatives to do that and working on resiliency projects to help keep the grid hardened. So, there's... I don't know what you mean by fragile. Like, that's a...
It is an ominous word. So, thank you.
Well, recently, I don't, how long ago was the tour that...
About a year ago.
About a year. No, it wasn't.
No, it happened in May.
May. I went on, I had the opportunity to go on a tour at PG and go through all of the resiliency plans and how they broker energy. It was amazing, and it completely answered your question. So, when you have that tour available, next time, let us know.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, that kind of runs in parallel
That kind of runs in parallel when we're looking at renewables and other alternative sources of energy. We're also looking at the grid to modernize the grid and strengthen the grid at the same time. So maintaining what we have and then strengthening it as well. It goes anywhere from emergency preparedness to making sure that we have enough power online to use when it's needed.
And we talk about, to add to that, that's a perfect, when we talk about using resources in the distribution grid, either be in a rooftop solar or flexible electric vehicle charging, you need that smart hardened grid to do that. You need a more modern grid that you're able to talk, that the communications is upgraded to where we are able to see when, where there are issues before there's even a blink in your light. So there's a whole initiative internally to keep, to get the grid smarter. And as you're smart, as you're making it smarter, more communicative with us back sitting in downtown Portland, it helps significantly with making the grid more resilient and reliable.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions?
I had one. So what, could you just give us a quick elevator speech on what's happening with Boardman? Did it go to a retrofit on the natural gas turbines or is the plant being shut down at some point?
Well, Boardman...
Pay attention to it.
Yeah, no problem at all. Boardman is a coal-fired power plant. It's the only coal-fired power plant here in Oregon. We own and operate it. There's actually a small percentage of a co-owner in Idaho Power, but we're 90% owners of this plant. Per some Clean Air Act regulations, we signed a deal in 2010. Well, that's, we, we, regulated by Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and the OPUC, we entered into agreement, a consent decree, to shut down Boardman or to seize coal-fired operations at Boardman by the end of this year, 2020. So we're still on path, I mean, that, it's a federally regulated and mandated thing that we do this. So it is, we're in the procedure, or we're in the process of retiring that plant or seizing operations of coal. It'll probably operate till the end of this year. What we do with that asset that our customers have already paid for once it shuts down and once coal-fired operations seize there is still an open question. We're reaching out to potential resource, research partners to figure out if there's something that we can do to benefit our customers at that site.
Where's the other 60% of the RPS coming from? And I guess, I'm trying to do the math here. So you said 40% was combined wind, solar, hydro?
Hydro. The bulk of it's hydro right now. So give or take about 25% hydro, 15% RPS.
So where's the other 60%? It's coming from?
Right now?
Yeah.
Right now, a portion of it is coal and natural gas. The bulk of it being natural gas and then just market purchases. As the mayor said, she went and we were constantly buying and selling power on the larger wholesale market to the benefit of our customers. So some of it's just market purchases off that larger wholesale market power. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And our integrated resource planning process is the process that is kind of filling that hole that Boardman is going to leave. And it'll be a mixture of renewables, energy efficiency, and other contracted resources that we don't own just yet.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
So to add to Counsel Reisner's question, I think when he was talking about, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, but the fragility of the infrastructure, I think what you were talking about is if you put mass load with a lot, you know, let's say we just introduce 45,000 electric cars into your grid system tomorrow. Is the grid prepared to handle that? And if not, you've explained that you're going through this iterative process of making us get to that point.
Yeah.
My question though is that, I work in the transportation sector as well at times and so I'm seeing your Class 8 electrification starting to actually gain traction, pardon the pun. And that could very well come into play very quickly.
Yeah.
So I think it is, I think it is a valid question from...
It is a very, and thank you for that clarification.
Where are we going with that grid?
Could that help me significantly?
Yeah, thank you.
There's other questions around the grid and its resiliency in other conversations. So I just wanted, I want to make sure, so that's a very helpful. Well, 45,000 cars are not, in our opinion, unfortunately not going to come on the grid tomorrow. We wish they will. But this is going to be a slow transition where we have to be in constant conversation with OEMs, manufacturers of those vehicles, to understand when they do make it to the electricity system. We have to have constant conversations with the customers that will be using those vehicles. So it's an open dialogue conversation there. And as we move down the path of making our grid smarter and investing in our distribution grid, those things are in the top of our mind. We have a transportation engineer or a transportation person who focuses on sitting in our distribution planning and engineering department to help with those type conversations right there.
Okay.
It's how, if we know this customer's coming in here or is going to retrofit this facility and they have a goal to electrify their vehicles, if we're doing distribution grid upgrades in that area, well, we need to take that into account today. Because it's not going to be there today, but it could be there in five to 10 years. So you have to have those conversations well in advance.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I think you're coming, are we still have a spot open for you next month? We're just kind of tentatively?
Maybe not. I'm tentatively right now.
Okay.
I'll let you know soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And I do highly recommend going on that tour. It was, it was pretty amazing. All right, first item is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion then?
Some moves.
Do we have a second? Motion was made by Counsel Tracy and seconded by Counsel Todd. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. So correspondence, it says none, no correspondence. But I do want to say something about correspondence. We'd talked about it before. I want to make sure that people understand that if you're going to supply us with correspondence, it needs to go to Tammy the Monday or Tuesday before our meeting. Because we want to make sure that that is included in our packet. And it's really unfair for us to give it the attention that it needs if we're getting it the very last minute. We would like to have it as part of our packet so we have, you know, five, four or five days to really look at what's in that correspondence. Couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, again, fill out the yellow cards over there on the table. Make sure I hit all my points here. And we'd like to have those filled out as soon as possible so that you're not holding up the meeting. And a reminder that we allow three minutes for business from the audience and for speaking on the agenda items. Second, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we want personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but we have to make them based on a path that is defensible. I want you to know, we appreciate that you taking the time to come here and participate on this. In order to be respectful, please turn your cellphones on silent and keep your side discussions to a minimum. And if you're not able to do that, I'm more than happy to pause the meeting until you are done and then we can continue on. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging and I hope all of you can help us do that. Thank you. First item on the regular agenda is item eight, Resolution 1172, adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing Resolution 1169. Staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Staff is asking council to approve Resolution 1172, adopting a new master fee schedule. We're updating the pass-through, there's only one line that we're updating. It's the pass-through for sanitary sewer treatment in the Water Environment Services area. And that is about two-thirds of the city of Gladstone. Wes informed the city of a 5% rate increase back effective July 1 of 2019, which is about $1.21 increase on the pass-through. Shortly after our last update, we learned that Wes revised their increase from 5% to 3.3%. Yes, that is correct, an actual reduction.
Wow.
So the new pass-through rate for sanitary sewer services in the Wes service area within Gladstone will now be $24.95 versus the $25.36. So we're actually going to reduce the bill by 41 cents per month. It's not a big deal, but we're truing that up. We are going to, that'll be effective July or January 1 of this year. So the last six months, we'll get trued up with Wes here in the next couple of months and that will, that savings will be passed back to the customers, which equals about $2.46 for the last six months. So, and this does, I just want to remind everybody, this does only affect two-thirds of the city of Gladstone, which if you're on Water Environment Services sewer treatment, which you'll see that on your utility bill.
All right, do we have any questions for staff?
I'd just like to make a note of that. It's kind of interesting. But I've been up here for about nine years now. And that, I believe, is the first reduction that we've ever presented. Not much, but it's a reduction.
Yeah. Counsel Reisner?
Yes, Mayor. We talked end of last year about having the right-of-way fee, or right-of-way, you know, that our sewer, stormwater... Included on the bill. Right. Yes. So, so following up to see where we are in regards to that and if we look... We are working through that right now. And what you will see on the utility bill is a statement basically stating that, because we were unable to put it on every single line, it would have actually, you know, if you did it on water, what that percentage is. What we did at the bottom is we're going to put a message in there stating that the 5% right-of-way fee is included in the charges above. So it'll be on the front of the bill. We were unable to break down the water, the sewer pass-through, the sewer collection, the stormwater and all that stuff and break it all down. It was going to get, it was with our Tyler system, we was not able to do that. So what we're doing is we're putting a statement on there that basically says that 5% right-of-way fee is included in the above charge. So it's not changing the charge above, it's just included in there, which it always has been. I'm hoping that answers your question.
Well, it does, but I'm confused. You know, we spent like $300,000 on this accounting system and we can't break it out so that our users know what they're paying for?
Could it just be one line item that shows?
But that's what we're doing. We're showing that the 5% increase is included by, so if you do the math, you can go 5% of your water bill, 5% of that is for right-of-way fees. So it's basically, it's on there. You can actually take your total bill and it'd be 5% of that.
Just to note, it's not actually giving you a number of this.
Exactly.
This is how much.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the details on that. I'm not in the finance Tyler system. But my understanding is it was, it wasn't, we wasn't able to do that for every, separate it out for every single line. So some of the charges, you know, there's four or five charges on there, all broke out. You got your pass-throughs and all that. To break them out all separately, I guess wasn't able to be done. Confused, so... Okay. Well, we've got a sewer bill, we've got a water bill and a stormwater, so there's three. Well, and then the sewers broken, broke out, with you got your collections and your treatment.
Right, but you add those together and you got a subtotal.
And then the water is being broke out. Remember, we're going from a base meter charge and then a usage charge and it's in a block rate, so it...
Right.
Which I guess complicates it. So I'm sorry, I'm not able to answer your question directly, but...
Oh, can you make a note? Because I'm not asking for, you know, where, you know, the 5% on every penny that's being spent. It's like, so you got either, the total is $63 or something like that, I think what mine was. And so it's...
So 5% of that would be for right-of-way.
Okay.
And so that's the statement that's on there.
So $60 is for the bill and $3, I'm just throwing out a number here. $3 is your 5%. I mean, I know it's not, but I'm just throwing that out there. Why can't we do that?
I don't have an answer for you. My understanding was is this was the solution to get that right-of-way on there and it's just not broke out, off from each line item.
Well, I think it's a step in the right direction, letting our citizens know that, hey, we are charging, or you're being charged for the right-of-way fee, it's 5%. But I think it'd be more transparent if we said, okay, it's $3 or $5 or $2.50, like it is on my PGE bill and, you know, the others that we're charging right-of-way fees on too.
Okay.
Well, we can...
I don't know the answer.
I don't know what the others feel, but...
I know having that conversation, the way you were wanting it, having all those broke out, the solution was with our Tyler system is put a statement on there that says 5% of the above charge is, it's included in there, is for right-of-way. So it's getting there, but it's not exactly what you're asking.
Counsel Tracy?
I think I'm hearing you say all you want to see is the actual 5% breakdown on the bill, correct?
It's one line item.
Yeah.
And if we're already supplying a line saying that the above fees also include a 5% right-of-way fee, we might as well just change that line to be the 5%.
But this line is a blanket statement. It's not, it's not in the Tyler system that's changing that number every time.
My other concern would be to add a number of lines, so we're adding pages to the bill. And I'd like to know what the cost on that will be.
Well, no, I don't advocate for doing that.
Okay, good.
I'm just saying with, with technology, I mean, we just had a great presentation about technology and where, you know, electricity's going and stuff. We can't use, you know, we can't provide information to the citizens on their utility.
I think that...
Well, I guess it'd be simple math. You take your bill times 5% and that's what it is. I guess that was the thought process of putting that on there.
I also think Director Wyntott's telling you that he doesn't know if you can or not.
No, no, I understand that. No, no, I know.
Yeah, we're not going to make any decisions tonight, but it's just a concern.
I'd sort of like to make somebody make a motion.
Yep. So you understand it's a concern, so we'll just look into that.
I'll, I know, I can blame him.
Anything we can do. All right.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Hold on. Any further discussion? Do we have anything from the audience?
We do not.
Okay. So would someone make a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 1172, adopting a revised master fee schedule to include an update to Water Environmental Services utility reduction from $25.36 per EDU to $24.95.
I second.
Motion was made by Counsel Todd and seconded by Counsel Mercer. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions passed. Next item is number nine, Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant. Staff?
Thank you. So I'm not super familiar with this one to answer a lot of questions, but I'll do my best. And so what we're asking for is authorization for the city administrator to sign a grant from the Oregon Department of Land and Conservation and Development for the amount of $26,160. And this is to assist the city with housing needs analysis and code amendments.
Right. We had, we were a part of the county's housing needs assessment. And basically what this is doing is taking that one step further so we can fine tune what our needs are and then developing the codes that support that. We asked for more, enough to cover everything, but they only gave us a partial, which is fine. So we've changed the scope to cover the costs that we were given and then we'll go in for another grant, probably the next cycle to finish it off. But I think it was very competitive this year because of House Bill 2001. Everybody needs to do this and so everybody was applying. So that's the reason that we're doing this. Any discussion? Do we have any business from the audience on this one?
Do not.
All right, would someone make a motion, please?
I move that we accept or authorize the city administrator to sign a city of Gladstone grant TA-21-183.
A second.
Motion was made by Counsel Reisner and seconded by Counsel Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. All right, next item is the county lia, or the council liaison appointment. Really, I heard from everybody that was on the committees as well as the council, most of the council. And I think I'm really comfortable with how everybody sits right now unless everyone's changed their mind and wants something different. The only thing that I would ask is that Neil, put you on with the police and fire also. Because Tom's on both and we're not, I just want to make sure that we're covered and that we're hearing back what's going on. The liaison appointments are more than just having your name next to a committee. We have to actually be active and come back to the council and let us know what's going on. Because that's really, unless we sit and listen to all the audio, that's our only connection to these advisory boards unless they come to us. So I, that's the main change. And I just want to make sure that on the business and civic side, that when we're out there, we're representing Gladstone. So is that all right with everybody?
All right with me.
Yep, sounds good. Unless no, anybody's changed their mind and wants to do something different? Nope? All right. So do you want me to, I can retype this. I mean, it's just very simple. Okay. Okay. Next is business carried forward. And the main thing that we need to talk about would be Jackie's contract. And I think I want to, we're just going to talk about what we want to offer. We're not going to go into detail on how we're going to change the contract because that's not really what we want to do right now. But I think we need to come up with an amount. Last council meeting, was it last one, it was suggested that it was a 7.5% increase. I don't know if that's going to be enough. Counsel Tracy and I have been talking about it, as was asked from, by the council. And we came up with more, what, an 11%?
11.5.
11.5% and rounded up to a 145. She's at 131. I believe when she first started with the city as the assistant city administrator, she was at 102. And then when we brought her six months later to the city administrator position, she went to 115, if I remember correctly. And then we gave her a raise 10 months after that to 131.5. And here we are with the next one.
She was at 102 when she first came on, when she was an assistant?
When she was an assistant, yeah.
Okay, that's right.
Yep. So discussion, what do you guys think about that? It's a big number, something that Gladstone's not used to paying. But we need to be competitive. Counsel Mercer?
10%? I didn't hear what...
11%.
We're, so we're aiming for 145. It's 146, 565 at 11.5%.
What's 11%? I think if we just said 145, we don't have to...
Is she at 131.5 right now?
Yeah, 131.5.
145, 965.
So 11. So come to 145. What do you think about that? Counsel Mercer?
11% or 11.5%?
It was more 11 to 145.
I support 11.5% if the others hold.
145's a nice clean number. Counsel Todd?
I'm actually more than fine with giving her 145, so...
Okay. Counsel Reisner?
No.
I know, you're going to say no. All right. Counsel Tracy?
I am comfortable with the 145.
I think she's worth it.
Okay. So then I think that's what we'll do is we'll recommend 145 and see where hap, what happens. All right. So that was the only business carried forward that I had unless somebody has something else. All right, next is business from the audience. And I want to remind everybody to please, hopefully you've had your yellow card up here and that you have three minutes. And I know from the faces in the audience that most of you are going to come up here and talk about the Ridge Gate property. And I want you to know that that has not come to council yet. It has not been our agenda. It has not been a topic of discussion. Counsel Tracy and I know about it because we were at the Parks and Rec Board meeting last night. So you can say what you want tonight, but I highly recommend putting it in writing so that we have something as part of our council packets and it's part of the record instead of just your three minutes. And come when we're actually discussing it. Because right now, we have no information. We have nothing at all. So, yeah. And I want you to know that is, it's at the very, very beginnings of that conversation. There's a lot of ideas being thrown around on how to make it work. So it's, March is when we're, I mean, it hasn't even come to council at all. March, we're going to have a joint work session with Parks and Rec Board and that's when it's first going to come to us. All right. First is Marna Barnes.
Well, most of you...
Most of you know me, but for those of you that don't, I'm Marna Barnes.
I am a resident, citizen, taxpayer, and voter here in Gladstone. And as most of you know, I am a strong supporter of good local government. And I just simply want to go on record tonight as saying I am strongly opposed of giving up selling, mitigating in any way, any of our green space. We just had PGE here talking to us about climate change, the importance of the environment. I just can't tell you how strongly I feel about this. I just can't tell you how strongly I feel about this. In addition to that, we are part of Metro. We pay taxes into Metro. Metro is attempting to get more and more green space for the area. We pay taxes to Gladstone, and Gladstone's wanting to take away our green spaces. Do you see the cognitive disconnect in this? In addition to that, we have people down at the parks, this just goes into the cognitive disconnect. We have people at the parks who are volunteering, that go in and plant things, just kind of willy-nilly. And then we have another volunteer group that comes in and thinks that they're invasive weeds, and they pull them all up. So I know that doesn't quite connect, but the connect is the cognitive disconnect. We are at, on one side of our mouths saying, we want to save green spaces, we want to save the environment. And on the other side, we're saying, sell it for a few dollars and put in a swing set. Once the green space is gone, it's gone forever. We'll never get it back. And what we consider to be assets in our city in terms of playground equipment, picnic tables, those are actually depreciable. They aren't really assets. They don't gain in value. They depreciate, and they require maintenance. And so what we take away in the environment, we are adding to our overall cost to maintain, if we're going to use that money, to increase playground equipment or whatever it is we're gonna do with that money, which my understanding hasn't been even determined yet. So, thank you very much for hearing me.
Marna, and again, for all of those sitting up here except Counselor Tracy and I, what she's referring to is a parcel in the Ridge Gate area, a tract that is currently green space. So again, you won't be hearing about it until March, so, all right, next. Harvey Barnes?
Good evening, Mayor Stipple and council members. I too, for the record, I'm Harvey Barnes. I live in, on Monticello Drive, very near the green space. I too want to go on record here tonight as extremely opposed to any reduction in green space or park space in this entire city. I think it's gonna be damaging to our neighborhood. I think it's gonna be a huge loss to the city in general, and it's gonna start a process where we willy-nilly just decide we're gonna reduce the outdoor recreation area in the city. I think it's wrong-headed. I think it's a wrong approach. And I'm asking the city council, when it does come before you, to take a good, strong look at this and send a clear message to the Parks Board that we're not gonna reduce park space or green space in exchange for more asphalt, more concrete, and picnic tables. That's not what we need here. And Mayor Stipple, you can be well assured that we will be here on the days, every day that this council or the Parks Board discusses this issue, we will be here, represented from our neighborhood will be here, and you can bet that in the future you will get more paperwork on this issue than you could possibly hope to get.
That's what we want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then you're gonna be very happy.
Good.
But thank you very much.
Yes, I highly recommend people send us paperwork.
You will not be disappointed.
Thank you. Monica Buettner? How do you spell the last name?
B-U-E-T-T-N-E-R.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I said that incorrectly.
Why don't you say it correctly? No, I just, you never know how things are spelled these days.
Um, I'm new to Gladstone. We moved here a year and a half ago.
Welcome.
For our first city council meeting. Um, I am here to voice my solidarity with everything that Marna and her partner said. Um, I understand that it's not being discussed yet, but I, um, one of the reasons we moved to our neighborhood was the beautiful trees and the green spaces. So I will be actively involved also in opposing this when it comes to discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next. And last is Valerie Thompson.
Hi, I'm Valerie Thompson. I'm a resident of Gladstone, and I just wanted to come tonight and, for the record, state my disappointment in the fact that this is even becoming an option, and I'm strongly opposed to the sale of the green space property anywhere in the city of Gladstone, because this one, I know well. It's a natural habitat to many animals and a huge variety of birds, including owls. And so I just wanted to come tonight to, even though it wasn't in the agenda, to let you know that there's many of us who are strongly opposed to this, and we'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a very different tone tonight. All right, anything else from the audience?
No others.
All right, business from the council. Counselor Ripley?
Um, probably the only thing I could think of is going with your green space thing. That's a huge disappointment, seeing the trees cut down on Portland Avenue.
Ugh, amen.
Last couple of weeks.
Yep.
Yeah, I hate to see Gladstone turn into something where you have to get a permit to cut a tree down, like in Lake Oswego, if it's three or four inches or bigger, you have to get a permit, or there's some weird rules like that. So people go and they cut around the trees on the bark, so the tree dies, so they can remove them, but to cut those trees down, those are huge trees, and they'll never grow back in our lifetime. So that's, at first I thought they were trimming them up.
No.
Guys saw a street and we did the same thing. They completely butchered this tree, but then it came back and actually looks good.
Yeah.
So-
It's been quite the talk. I've had quite a bit of grief over those. And they, all they needed was a permit to close the sidewalk and part of the street. That was it.
Yeah.
Were they diseased?
No, they were, um, going into sidewalks.
Definitely had.
Oh, do they?
I'm right across the street from them.
That's part of, I think that, I'm sorry, um, my understanding was her due diligence was paid, that she has a liability issue there, and that she's willing to actually spend a lot of money to actually bring back mature trees, and go the extra mile and spend money to bring back mature trees, because she does know how nice and beautiful and majestic the trees are. I really, boy, I'll tell you what, let's get the facts straight. Like, let's talk to people and get the actual facts, because we throw a lot of shade in this community at people who are making decisions based on their lives, their liability, her economic interests, a lot of things, and then when she steps up, as I understand, through Counselor Todd and others, she steps up to do a better, to go beyond and not just come in with status quo, I'll throw a couple little trees in there. Let's give her some credit for that, shall we? I mean, I just don't understand this. It's, I've been watching this for the last couple of weeks. I'm like, this poor woman, you know?
Well, she grew up watching those trees grow. She grew up in that house.
So do you think she may have had some kind of connection with them?
Just a little bit.
Emotional connection to-
Pam's great.
Okay, well-
She had some connection to the thirty thousand dollars she spent also to have those trees come down, so, you know.
Why are we throwing her under the bus? That's my question.
No, I agree.
I'd rather we don't. I mean, I just don't think it's fair to her, and I'm sorry, I'm encroaching upon your-
No, no.
Yeah, just want to make sure that when she does plant the trees, you and I, like you and I discussed last night, that she is gonna do the right tree so that we don't have the issue of the root heave anymore.
She's done a lot of research.
Yeah.
Anybody who knows her-
Metro's got a great program.
That's true.
Yeah, Metro has a Green, a Tree Streets book that's great, great reference.
Who paid for cutting them down?
I think Pam did.
She did?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm gonna say, it's gotta be a lot of money, so.
I did stand out there and sob a little as they came down, but she was standing next to me, and I'm like-
It hurt everybody's feelings, but-
Well, no, but she stood next to me, and I realized, she grew up in that house, those, that was her aunt's house. They built all of those houses. I can't be more sad than her and her sister, who are standing there watching. Okay, okay, I'll go back inside, so.
All right, Counselor Tracy?
Maybe I just threw out everything right there. One of the things I would like to say with regard to the green spaces, when I first came on this council, I know that the mayor was involved in this as well. We were really concerned about whether or not the guidelines for wetlands and green spaces were being followed during a private development, and I know that it was controversial. I think that characterizing the council, certainly the sitting council, and the most of the folks that are up here now were there during that discussion three years ago, two and a half years ago. Characterizing this council as not being concerned about nature spaces or green spaces, I don't think is fair as well. I mean, I think that, for one thing, this conversation hasn't even been, hasn't even come to us, and for another, two and a half years ago, we were very, very organized in fighting to preserve green spaces, so I just, I don't think it's a fair characterization. I'd like everybody to take a step back, take a breath, and then let's work together on figuring out the best path forward for that particular green space. Because this social media and everything that's exploded in the last five days doesn't really work very well in this community, and we see that over and over. And I think we're getting some calming here, which is nice, but let's work together on a solution. I don't think anybody wants, I mean, I'm not having a good discussion, Marna, but I don't think anybody wants to see green spaces go away. I don't think that's the intent here. So that's just my opinion on that. And I appreciate your activism. I certainly appreciate you being able to rally a lot of folks and, you know, come to us with a salute or with an issue, but let's slow it down a little bit, because as we talked last night, zero to a hundred in three seconds is not really gonna be a very good planning scenario for all of us.
And since you called me out officially, I want to say at no point have I said anything about the city council.
Appreciate that. I'm not saying that you did, but let's say others did.
Well?
As though there was a reality, some kind of a narrative that was based on a reality, which was in fact not a reality. Would you agree with that, Marna?
Um, I, what I posted was absolutely accurate.
I understand what you posted.
And if someone read it differently, I'd-
And posted differently?
It doesn't allow us to do our work, and that's what we're trying to do here, and I appreciate it. Thank you, though.
All right, Counselor Reisner?
Well, I was gonna say, nothing tonight, but the green space came up. Well, um, reality is, this is gonna have to go to the voters.
Yeah.
So why are we even wasting staff time? It's not gonna pass. It, I mean, I can guarantee you, it won't pass. So I'd like to say, um, let's put it behind us, and-
It's gotta go to us.
Can I finish?
Process.
Um, I was gonna say, though, from what Counselor Todd was saying, is make a, you know, we've got a plan, a parks plan. Maybe we might need to tune in a little bit for this particular park property, but it's not gonna get sold. I can guarantee you that.
You're probably right.
So-
But again, this is not a discussion that we need to be having right now, because it has not come to us.
No, no, I know.
It's not on our radar. It needs to be discussed when it comes to us, so we don't have all of the information.
But what I'm saying is, it shouldn't come to us, because it's wasting staff time who keep telling us that they don't have enough time to do what they need to do anyway. Because this is part of public works, the parks, and they're still digging up, you know, old pipes and stuff.
Okay.
So my contention is, let's just have staff say, you know, when we get a budget for the parks, we'll discuss it then.
Okay, but remember, our charge to the Parks and Rec Board was, you are not funded, find a sustainable resource, a funding resource. So they are going through the master plan that was carefully vetted-
Right.
-and finding the easiest ways to do that. So this needs to follow the process, because I don't want to change the way we do things. There's a specific way that these things need to be followed. They have not made the recommendation to us yet. That is, their part as an advisory board is to make recommendations to us, and we owe it to them to at least let them follow the process.
I still think we have a $1.2 million budget and a biannual budget for parks, Mayor.
Yep.
So you and I discussed this, too. I think what we're looking for, Counselor Reisner, one of the things we're looking for was being able to track that FTE so we can front-load a parks coordinator or somebody to actually push these programs forward. And that's where we're kind of hung up, right?
Sure.
So if we're looking for money, that's what we're looking for money for.
Yeah.
Okay.
So-
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, Counselor Todd?
Oh, I'm fine.
Counselor Mercero?
I just want to note and discuss something further that the mayor mentioned about liaisons. And in talking with the Chief of Police, Chief Smurber, I've already said that I would like to get the council more involved, okay? And so I'm requesting, if you have issues or thoughts or suggestions or whatever, pass them on to me, okay? I go to a command meeting quite often, and I can pass that information on to the officers and the chief and get their input, and their thoughts about dealing with whatever, so. And I'll do the same thing with the fire bomb.
Okay. That's it?
That's it, thank you.
All right, so I want everybody to know that the next phase of the Trolley Bridge project, which was the engineering, design, and permitting, was unanimously approved. So that's very exciting, so we get to move on to the next step. And Metro's T-2020 bond, which is apparently gonna be renamed, um, the actual construction cost was unanimously approved to be included in the T-2020 bond. So if that passes, that's, the money's there, so that's very exciting. This Thursday, I'm meeting with the West, which is Water and Environmental Services, our sewer folks, meeting with the West Governance Group to finalize our intergovernmental agreement on how it will be ran. This has been a three-year process, and speaking, talking about sewage monthly for three years has not been a highlight of my mayorship, but we do it anyway. And I'm happy to say that everybody on that group is on the same page, and it's a team, and they are absolutely willing to help us move forward. It's a team approach, which is exciting, because we've got the heaviest lift out of all of the other partners in the sewer district, and they realize that. That if our stuff gets fixed, it benefits them, so that's, those are the discussions that we're gonna be having. Um, I think that was it. That's all that I had, unless somebody can remind me of something else that I missed? Nope? All right, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn?
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at seven? What, seven thirty-nine?